Please all rise for invocation by Bishop Thomas Holt.
My heaven and father, once again we come before you and we thank you for your mercy and your grace, and we thank you for the blessings you've given upon our council that we can carry out the mandate, whatever they do, let it be done in clarity of mind with the power and the spirit of God, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you Bishop. Councilman Slayton, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda, I would request the addition of a new item number three, a certificate of congratulations for Eugene Capers. Are there any other additions or deletions?
If not, I'll make a recommendation to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have before us the consent agenda, those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial or marked with an asterisk and can be acted on and will be acted on by a single rule call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Staff has requested that item number five A, proposed financial reforms, public safety fund, be removed from the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Slayton?
Is this where I raise my issue about five A, or is it after the adoption? It's four A, and there was a new number three, so it's reordered.
We'll come to that.
Yes, after the consent. Thank you.
Any questions? What is the pleasure of council?
Move the acceptance of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam President. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Yes, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Slavin, oh, we're gonna wait until it turns up, okay. The first item on our agenda is a presentation by Lutheran Senior Services of Dover Incorporated for the Payment Full of Taxes pilot. I would invite Mayor Christensen and Mr. Gary Coy, executive director at Senior Center, Lutheran Senior Services of Dover, to the podium for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Would it be appropriate also, since this is a financial issue, to ask the chairman of the Legislature and Finance Committee to join us at the podium?
Certainly.
Because this is big money.
I thank you all for the opportunity to again appear here. This is my seventh year at Lutheran Senior Services of Dover, which is Luther Towers and Luther Village. As you know, we've been providing housing for 33 years to seniors, affordable housing, and it's a very important mission, and we certainly could not do it without the cooperation with all of you and all the city departments, including the reconstruction of our new building and all the cooperation and help that we've gotten from the city for that. We appreciate the police, the fire department, and all the other inspectors that come out. And with that, check for $27,227 even.
Well, I'd like to thank you for this presentation of this check to the city, and we're very pleased to have Luther Towers as a part of the city of Dover, and we look for you to expand and continue to grow. Councilman Slayton?
The one number that wasn't mentioned was how many, how many people do you serve at Luther Towers?
We have 391 apartments right now, just over 400 people, and our new building will have 45 more apartments, so a little under 450 people. Call your place home, and we thank you for providing those homes for people on our side.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a certificate of congratulations for Eugene Capers. I would invite Mr. Capers and the mayor, and Shawanda Rochelle, recreational specialist, to join the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am very familiar with principals, as I spent most of my time in the principal's office, and a matter of fact, at Dover High, a lady told me she saw me so many times in the office there, she thought I was part of the staff.
Look how you turned out.
Yeah, look how I turned out. Mr. Capers, we'd like to present this to you, and thank you for providing a safe haven for the youth champions program by allowing the city of Dover space at Town Point Elementary School for over 15 years. It has been a great partnership between the city of Dover and Town Point Elementary, has been a blessing to all of our youth. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to present this? And thank you for all that you've done for the students in the Capital School District, and I wish you a happy retirement.
Well, thank you so much.
And you get two minutes at the podium here.
How about 30 seconds?
That'd be fine.
Counsel members and everyone who's not a council member, I just want to personally thank you for providing the opportunity for us to sustain this program for both our students and parents, but more in particular, I would like to personally thank Ms. Shawanda, as well as the lady to my immediate right, this is Ms. Crystal Tompkins. I hired her a long time ago, and it was the best investment I could have made for Town Point, because it's been a benefit to all who have worked with her. She is the liaison who works between the city of Dover and Town Point Elementary School to provide the services. I always tell people we have the best deal in town, okay? And I think it kind of came to an antithesis of greatness this past school year, because we had close to 50 kids participate in the program. $35 a week, and you can't beat it, folks, you really can't. It's money well spent, and economically, it has been an incentive to keep people within the program. So, without you folks supporting us, it would not be possible. So, thank you all, appreciate the bird marriage.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item four A. Mr. Slavin?
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell had expressed some concerns to me about wanting some more information about this, and because I've been out of state, I haven't had a time to sit down with her. I plan to do that in the next week, and I would ask that this item be deferred until the agenda for the August 11 meeting.
Would you like to make a motion?
And I'll also.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the number six, the evaluation of proposals, furnishing and installation of air-cooled condensers at the John W. Pitt Center. Staff, I would call on Scott Koenig to brief us about this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. In the packet tonight is the proposal from staff to install four 20-ton air conditioning condensers in units at the John W. Pitt Center to air-condition the gymnasium. This was a component of the original building plan that was not put in under the original construction contracts. Staff has been through the proposal process through RFP number 14-0046-PW. Proposals were opened on July 10 of this year. Based on the review of those proposals, the staff is recommending a contract with Joseph T. Richardson, Incorporated, in the amount of $104,000. I should note that the original project budget for this from fiscal year 2014 was $65,000. To construct this project, we would need to, in addition to authorizing the contract with Joseph T. Richardson, we would need to transfer $39,000 from the Parkland Reserve Fund to complete the project funding. Mrs. Mitchell has added a fiscal note at the end of the action form indicating what the balance would be left in the Parkland Reserve once this transfer were accomplished, if council votes to approve it. However, based on the review of the documents, this is the second time we've actually bid it. The first time, we had a problem with some of the material components of the bid. We are recommending that we move forward with the $104,000 expense. This component of the center is necessary to really enhance the programs that we're running out at the John Pitt Center. Summertime, when the heat and humidity gets up inside of the gymnasium, it just makes it absolutely unbearable to conduct programming in there. So, we are losing revenues in some cases, because people are not attending the programs at this point, air temperature and air quality inside of the building. So, from a staff standpoint, we believe it's necessary to move forward with the $104,000 project, and this project would be completed this calendar year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Say, Madam President, Madam Chairman?
Madam President.
Madam President.
Your honor, you know, most esteemed, whatever.
Ah, there we go. If the, now, a quick few directives, please. The, when you, I'm a little bit confused on the fiscal note. Is the $204,000 balance after the proposed appropriation or before the proposed appropriation? That part wasn't clear?
It's before the proposed appropriation. The money hasn't been set aside in that account just right yet, so it would go up after that.
All right, thank you.
It would go to three or four.
Any other questions from council?
For Mr. Koenig, the presumption from the estimate is that the low bidder is $104,000 to put in the four units. The estimate, or at least the budget estimate last year was $65,000. Has something changed in what was budgeted versus what we are actually advertising for work on? Have we increased the project by $40,000 in some capacity, or do we just under-budget?
The original budget, the original estimate that was done had two components. There was a labor component and a materials component, and the, there was an error in the capital plan last year that only included the labor component of it. It didn't have the actual machine components of it, so there was an error in the original budget. We weren't sure what it would come in at, so we were reluctant to put a number into the budget, so that's why we're here now at the $104,000.
Is the $104,000 fair and accurate, based on what would cost to complete the mechanical budget and the labor?
The original estimate that they basically thought it would be about $130,000.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Koenig? Seeing none.
Move the acceptance of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the staff recommendations. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam President. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Yes, again, the item is approved unanimously. Next item on our list is the final reading of proposed ordinance 2014-15 with the staff amendment number one. First reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of July 14, 2014. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the entrance of the council chambers. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title amendment, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading. Separate motion will be necessary for its adoption. What is the pleasure of council?
So, move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Proposed ordinance 2014-15, amending chapter 110, utilities, Article 3, order service, Division 3, order impact fees, Section 110 through 207, establishment of equivalent dwelling units, and Article 4, sanitary sewer service, Division 3, wastewater collection, impact fees, Section 110-282, establishment of equivalent dwelling units, the staff amendment number one. Mr. Koenig?
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. The proposed amendments are being staff-driven in this case with respect to the caps for impact fees. Currently, the code caps both water and wastewater impact fees at 100 EDUs per certificate of occupancy. This was a cap that was placed in the ordinance probably about 25, 20, about 20 years ago to address economic development issues. However, as it stands now, it is a by right cap, so there is no ability for the city to negotiate with a developer on how much they would contribute to infrastructure related to the impact fee. So, the proposal would be to amend the cap, taking off the cap for future projects, and then placing the burden on a developer to come in and make a, an economic argument as to why the city should consider a reduction from a cap of over 100 EDUs to potentially dropping that cap to as low as 100 EDUs. The amendment would be applied to projects with building permits that are issued after today's date. In the discussion of this amendment, we specifically talked to project representatives from the Calpine Project, so this amendment would not affect Block 1 of the Calpine Project, which is currently under construction. However, if they were to construct Block 2 of the proposed project, that building permit would be issued after July 28. The amended ordinance would potentially impact that project, as it would then place the burden on the developer to come in and make an economic argument and presentation as to why the council should amend the impact fee and what, and how much of an amendment we should do for that project. But in no cases would those large projects be less than 100 EDUs. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. If you would please direct this to Mr. Koenig. The question I have is, do the, currently, are the county, is the county portion of the impact fee affected by this, by the current ordinance?
Now, the county ordinance is separate of the city ordinance, and there are no caps, and I don't believe there's any ability in the county ordinance to negotiate an impact fee. So, so for example, the Calpine Project right now is paying an impact fee purely based on the county ordinance without a cap.
Okay, so, so what, so this addresses then only the city portion of the impact fee?
That, that's correct. It would address the city water impact fee and the city sewer impact fee. It does not affect the Kent County impact fee, nor does it affect the, there's an administrative fee that's calculated off the county component, so it does not affect either the Kent County fee or the administrative fee.
Now, does the Economic Development Office have, have they given any opinion on this particular item?
I think traditionally, economic development offices argue for as much incentive as possible, but I think our Economic Development Office understands that we've got to maintain the infrastructure, we gotta be able to expand the infrastructure, so I wouldn't say that they are wholeheartedly applauding this, but they're not.
Now, and the final question is, has to do with, it, it talks about, does this have to come before city council for a reduction, the way the ordinance is worded?
Yes. So, if you had a large development project that was, for example, a single building permit that was gonna contribute by formula 300 EDUs to the system, that developer would have the right to come before city council and make an argument that they should have their 300 EDU impact fee reduced to as low as 100, but no lower than.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Mr. Slavin have his, then I may ask another one.
I just had a question on process, and you can just clarify something for me, hopefully, Mr. Koenig. The language that's in front of us includes red-stricken language, which was the original ordinance, correct?
Yes.
And then the green-stricken language was what was brought before committee, correct?
The, yes, that was what went to the Leg and Finn Committee, or the utility committee, I think.
And that's what Leg and Finn passed the recommendation on to the full council.
That's correct.
This new language that's here, when was?
The new language that was here was between the Leg and Finn meeting and the first reading, because one of the developers in the city had concerns about the language not being clear enough, that it would exempt their project that was under construction now. So, we went through several iterations with staff to make sure that we were addressing all the components of the stricken green language, but clarifying the point that building permits that have already been issued are still subject to the cap at this point.
Why wouldn't that issue have been brought back to committee?
I was following the process that I thought was...
Well, the process doesn't involve bringing something to committee and then completely changing it before you bring it to council, correct?
It's not a complete change, it was just a clarification. There would no...
The entire language that the committee took up has been stricken. The entire language that we made a recommendation on has been stricken, and the committee has never seen the language that's before us. Correct?
Yes. Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Koenig? Seeing none. What is the pleasure of council? I'm sorry, what is the pleasure of council regarding staff amendment one? Mr. Anderson?
Madam President, personally, I would move that the ordinance with staff amendment one be referred back to the Legislature and Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Hare?
Is the language, is the language that different than what we, I know there's been some strikings and whatever, but is, bottom line, is there really a big difference in what was presented, Scott?
Mr. Hare, if I may, Mrs. McDowell says that she can also shed some light on it.
Okay.
The only, the only new information is the date based on July 28th being effective today, permits being issued after today. When I looked at it again for, to do the addition, we went through and felt like it was a little bit confusing, the wording of it, so we just cleaned up the wording to make it a little more readable. But the stricken part says the same thing as the new language, except for the July 28 date.
Mr. Lynn?
I have a question. I just want to make sure that in the interim, in the event that this gets sent back to committee, that we don't anticipate approving any large building permits which would negatively affect infrastructure. So, between now and perhaps the next council meeting, or the next council meeting thereafter, does staff anticipate approving any large building permits that may generate significant revenue as a result of this ordinance change?
I don't believe there's any big permits that are, you know, ready for issuance.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare?
Based on what Mr. McDowell said, is there, I mean, do we really need to saddle up the pony and the dog and go back through it all again? I mean, because when I read it, I mean, I guess there might have been, I didn't see anything different other than what Scott had said. I mean, I myself don't see the need to send it back. I mean, thanks, staff.
Mr. Smith?
Presenting to us that nothing's changed.
While I appreciate that the language may be the same, the process was certainly different, and I think we need to respect the committee process that involves citizen members of the committee, that allows for the give and take of public testimony to be taken, which is different than what's before us right now, although I want to respect what Mr. Hare has said, which is, isn't necessary. I think, I want to take some comfort over the fact that this is not precedent, and this is not, this is not a way that we're gonna conduct our government, where we tell a committee one thing, and they present a recommendation to a council that's one thing, and then something else is presented in its place, and I find that to be a little distasteful.
Mr. Hare?
Following up on what Mr. Slavin just said, I do agree, and I think if anything, staff should be told, this isn't the proper way to do it. Even though it's basically the same, and I don't see the need for it to go back, the procedure wasn't right, and in the future, it should be done the proper way, like Mr. Slavin said. There is a procedure to follow. I mean, we could always change procedures on how we give pay raises, too, without telling staff, say, oh, well, we changed some things, you're not gonna get them this year. I mean, I think it needs, if the procedure's there, needs to be followed. I don't think it needs to go back for this one, myself, but I do think it needs to be followed, as Mr. Slavin said.
Mr. Lynn and Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Just briefly, it doesn't appear that there'd be any prejudice to the city if this were to go back to committee, given that we don't anticipate approving any large building permits between now and the next council day. But I do have some concerns. Who was the developer who requested changes to the ordinance between the time of the committee meeting and tonight's meeting?
The Calpine Corporation was the developer that was concerned that the...
When I looked at it again for, to do the addition, we went through and felt like it was a little bit confusing, the wording of it, so we just cleaned up the wording to make it a little more readable. But the stricken part says the same thing as the new language, except for the July 28 date.
Mr. Lynn.
I have a question. I just want to make sure that in the interim, in the event that this gets sent back to committee, that we don't anticipate approving any large building permits which would negatively affect infrastructure. So, between now and perhaps the next council meeting or the next council meeting thereafter, does staff anticipate approving any large building permits that may generate significant revenue as a result of this ordinance change?
I don't believe there's any big permits that are, you know, ready for issuance.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare.
Based on what Mr. McDowell said, is there, I mean, do we really need to saddle up the pony and the dog and go back through it all again? Because when I read it, I mean, I guess there might have been, I didn't see anything different other than what Scott had said. I mean, I myself don't see the need to send it back. Thanks, staff.
Mr. Slavin.
Presenting to us that nothing's changed.
While I appreciate that the language may be the same, the process was certainly different, and I think we need to respect the committee process that involves citizen members of the committee, that allows for the give-and-take of public testimony to be taken, which is different than what's before us right now, although I want to respect what Mr. Hare has said, which is, isn't necessary. I think, I want to take some comfort over the fact that this is not precedent, and this is not, this is not a way that we're going to conduct our government, where we tell a committee one thing, and they present a recommendation to a council that's one thing, and then something else is presented in its place, and I find that to be a little distasteful.
Mr. Hare.
Following up on what Mr. Slavin just said, I do agree, and I think if anything, staff should be told, this isn't the proper way to do it, even though it's basically the same, and I don't see the need for it to go back. The procedure wasn't right, and in the future, it should be done the proper way, like Mr. Slavin said. There is a procedure to follow. I mean, we could always change procedures on how we give pay raises, too. Now, tell them, staff, say, oh, we changed some things, you're not going to get them this year. I mean, I think it needs, if the procedure's there, needs to be followed. I don't think it needs to go back for this one, myself, but I do think it needs to be followed, as Mr. Slavin said.
Mr. Lynn, then Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Just briefly, it doesn't appear that there'd be any prejudice to the city if this were to go back to committee, given that we don't anticipate approving any large building permits between now and the next council day. But I do have some concerns. Who was the developer who requested changes to the ordinance between the time of the committee meeting and tonight's meeting?
The Calpine Corporation was the developer that was concerned that the original language didn't specifically include a date so that we could draw a hard line as to what date the building permits were issued.
So, if I understand their concern, their concern was that they thought that perhaps the enhanced language of the ordinance may affect them, given the ambiguity in the date of the issuance of the building permit in the ordinance. Could it be construed that they would have to comply with the enhanced ordinance? Have we gotten a legal opinion on that? I'm not necessarily sure why, we're just saying, hey, it's not applicable to Calpine for Unit 1. Whose decision was that to make?
The, the impact fee calculation for Unit 1 has already been issued. We've already committed to that in writing. So, the whole point of the change in the ordinance was to give the city negotiating leverage on future large projects like this. I wasn't aware we're violating any policy. This was a staff amendment that was...
And I'm not going, I'm not going there.
This was a staff amendment that was put forward back at the first reading, so I...
Now, the, when you say it's in writing with Calpine, with regard to the enhanced ordinance language, this is in writing signed by an individual who has the authority to sign on behalf of council?
The, the impact fee calculation that we, which we do for every development, was done back when the building permit was issued, or prior to the building permit being issued. So, it had in it the caps, because that was the ordinance that was in place, building permit was...
And that makes sense, given the adequate public facilities ordinance decisions issuing on similar topic from the county level. It makes sense, I can understand why they would want that language. I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Mr. Slavin, then Mr. Perza.
Just a question for Mr. Rodriguez. Does this problem that we've highlighted with the process, would it in any way invalidate the adoption of this ordinance?
Mr. Slavin, I don't think so.
Okay. And I'll just repeat, I'm in favor of the ordinance, but in favor of the language is just the process that I had the issue with. Thank you.
Mr. Perza.
Was, the version I have is black and white, so I can't tell what's red and what's green, but is the version that we're looking at tonight the same as the first version of the ordinance at the beginning of July, that was put forth, the first reading?
Yes. With the, with the staff amendment, it was the, I think it was the advertised staff amendment on the agenda.
So, that's what was publicly posted on the city's website, and there hasn't been any changes between the first reading and tonight?
No.
This has been the consistent version? It just changed slightly from the, cleaned up for purposes of language purposes since the time of the last committee hearing or last approval?
Would have been the June committee.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I believe the motion on the floor from Mr. Anderson is to refer it back to Legislative and Finance Committee, and just as the chair of that committee, I'm comfortable with the, with the ordinance moving forward. I just, I'm also comfortable with the fact that we've aired this issue out about process, and we'll all pay attention to that, so the maker of the motion can make up his mind if he wants to proceed with it.
A clarification, the original ordinance went to utility.
Oh, never mind. That's yours.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any kind of slide?
The answer is, it's just good.
I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and vote. All the questions.
Can I ask the maker of the motion to amend it to, have it referred back to utility, not Legislative and Finance?
I would accept that.
Now, you, this will be a vote for referral back to utility, not Legan-Finn. Finance and administration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Just have a roll call. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Perza?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
No.
Mr. Hare?
No.
Mr. Hutchison?
No.
Mrs. Williams? No. Motion fails. Seven to six.
Madam President, I move adoption of the, of ordinance 204-15 with staff amendment one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Slavin.
Did the last motion, did it refer the item back?
It failed to refer.
All right, thank you.
Against my counsel, I appreciate Mr. Slavin's concern with making sure these matters and questions are addressed for the public. I think in this, in this particular instance, the, the staff did a good job of keeping the substance of the language as intended by the committee, so I don't think there's been any change in substance or procedure or anything like that that would have impacted the community. The, the language within the proposed ordinance has been advertised within the public over the last month, it hasn't been changed at all since the, initially introduced before the city, so I'm comfortable proceeding as it is. It seems to have satisfied everybody on council, at least that that element's fine, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
And let me say further, as the chairman of the Utility Committee, I also have no problems with this proceeding. Mr. Lynn.
Just a question for, for you, Ms. Williams. During the utility meeting, that this issue was discussed, did members of the public come out to discuss this item? Was there any public comment?
I don't believe so, sir, but I would have to refer back to the, to the court to make sure that's accurate.
My only concern is that this essentially stops the public from having a meaningful dialogue or interaction with the council or its committees on this issue. I mean, yes, they could have come out at the public hearing at 7:15, and they could have evinced their concern, but it really precludes a meaningful dialogue on it, especially with the citizen members of the committee who aren't here tonight to tell us what their opinion is of the changes. I think, I share the concern with Mr. Slavin as well, that what we have here is, it went before the committee, the committee approved it, and then the interim, a developer calls staff, staff changes the ordinance, ordinance comes back before council, which, that just, that smells bad to me. I have concerns with the manner within which that was handled. My, my own thought, though, it's clearly been voted down, is that it should go back to the committee, at least for the, the opportunity for the public to weigh in on this.
As chairman of the committee, I will again reiterate, I had no difficulty with the coming back in front of the whole council. After all, all committee, all committee decisions end up here anyway, and as, I don't know if Mrs. McDowell has the answer to the question. My memory is usually pretty good, and I don't, I'm sorry. There was nobody, there was nobody there. So, we haven't, we haven't betrayed any public trust, and as I remember, the, the citizen members were, everybody, I believe this went unanimous, everybody was in agreement. So, we have much to do about nothing. Mr. Anderson.
Just because you get an unanimous committee vote on multiple occasions doesn't mean that necessarily the city council's always going to agree, so...
Oh, I, I, I...
Within that framework...
Certainly, certainly, I certainly agree with you there.
Call the question.
Thank you. Madam Court, just to make sure.
The procedure, when you say call the question, do you vote on calling the question?
Don't do that, then. Let's vote.
Don't call the question. Madam Court. We're going to do this, we're going to do this so everyone knows what's going on.
All right.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Perza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Motion carries, yes. Motion carries five to three. Last item on our list is the council person announcement, council member announcements, and I would like to take this opportunity to wish Councilman Anderson a very happy birthday tomorrow, and I will tell you that there are certain members of this council who believe older is better.
Yes.
And you are in good coming.
Thank you.
Is there any other council announce?
Move for it, Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those who stand, gentlemen.